In the well-protected environment in which we are tonight.[16.64][16.64](laughter) You will see why they're here in a minute. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on May 10, 2016, in the City Council Chambers, 1311 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas, to consider the following matters. Call to order. We have a quorum here. All of us here absent, Councilmember Gilliland. If you're able, please stand, and Mayor Protim will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Councilmember Schiff will offer an invocation.
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to serve you on the council this evening. I thank you for anointing this council with your peace and your joy so that we would do your will, Lord. I thank you that you've given us this great country with all the freedoms that we have and that we are able to vote for the people who represent us and have a say-so in our form of government. We just ask that you bless every activity of the evening, and we thank you for overseeing this...bless you. This meeting this evening. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please proceed. We are pleased to have with us Eliza May to talk to us about the Susan G. Carmen Austin Ambassador Training Program. Ms. May? You okay?
Yeah.
We're having trouble up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It is indeed my pleasure and honor to be before you today. As you stated, my name is Eliza May, and I am out of Austin, but I'm here to share with you a few of the good news of what Coleman Austin is doing for your community. As part of our five-county area that we serve, Bastrop is one of them. Before it led up to this point where we're at today, we actually did a community profile study of your community over a two-year period, of which we did an analysis of services available in your community as it pertains to health care, and we also did some focus groups as well. One of the things that we learned from the focus groups, or two things that we learned from the focus groups that we're now beginning to move forward on, was that we needed more mobile mammography services in your community, of which we are now working with one of our community partners to ensure that we bring those to you. Your first mammogram mobile service will be happening in July. The other thing that we heard was that the community needed more training, more knowledge about breast cancer and resources as a whole. And so to that end, I have already established a training that we'll be doing this Saturday here in your community at the public library. So I want to thank you for your facility, first of all. I want to thank you for your audience today, and I also want to thank the work of Ann Franklin because had it not been for her, I think I wouldn't be here today because when I came to see you a couple of weeks ago, she informed me that this might be an opportunity. You have some packets before you, and in there, I just want you to note a couple of things of importance. First and foremost, there is an invitation to our Community Health Grantee Luncheon that looks like this. This is our actual formal luncheon where we're giving out our certificates and our awards for the grantees that will be putting out these services in your community. So if you're able to participate with us, we would love to have you come, and just let me know, and we'll be able to add you or however you do your scheduling, we'll make sure we RSVP for you so that we can count you at that luncheon. In addition to that, and most importantly, of course, is the information on the ambassador training. The ambassador training, as I said earlier, it's going to be happening on Saturday, May the 14th, from 10:30 to noon at your local library, the Bastrop Public Library, and it's going to be at the Maynard Conference Room. Of course, you already know where the library's located, but for those in the public that may need the address, the address is 1100 Church Street, Bastrop, Texas. So that's part of what information that you have there. In addition to that, I'm going to also just very quickly share with you, and this is changing, but these are some of the services that are available through our funding to your community. I'm leaving you with a service guide that you can leave, or you can actually use for referrals with your constituents. In addition, we also have our Race for the Cure that's coming up. It'll be coming up, and I'd like to come back later. Maybe I could talk to you about that later. I won't do it today. That's coming up in Austin. It'll be in October. That's what funds, basically, it funds our programs. And I guess last but not least, the real reason why we're doing our training is because if you look at some statistics that I have on the right hand of your folder here, you'll see three different graphs, but the one that I wanted to bring your attention to is the qualitative, the quantitative local breast cancer impact. And you can see, I mentioned earlier that we serve five counties. Well, Bastrop, you can see where you fall in there. Overall, you've got the state Texas rate of 114 people, .4 per every 100 person is assessed or diagnosed with breast cancer. In your community, you're at 98.5 percent. So meaning 98.5 people out of every 100 persons in your county would be potentially at risk for the incidence of breast cancer. That's why we're here. That's why it's important to us that we begin to do our trainings and make these services available to you. Last but not least, I'll just leave you behind, and again, you have this information with you, is the information on the research that we're doing as it pertains to breast cancer because we know that we can have services, we can diagnose it and detect it early, but if we don't find the cures for breast cancer, we won't ever finish, right? It's like a bottomless pit. So we're hoping that we'll be able, through efforts like we're doing now in your community and our partnership, I hope for the future, that we'll be able to change those rates and improve your health care status as a whole. Thank you very much.
Before you go, Councilmember McNally.
Yes, I'd like to thank you and Ann so much for bringing this back. We had mammogram screening for a very short time, and we needed desperately. This woman on the front, the bald-headed woman, is me seven years ago. I'm a breast cancer survivor. So is my mother. So is my sister.[451.12][451.12](applause) And if it weren't for early screening, we wouldn't be here.
That's right. And that's precisely why. We just want to get the word out about the early screening, but also the availability of these services. Our services are free of charge. It's irrespective of income or whether you're insured or uninsured. Predominantly, of course, we target those that are underinsured and uninsured because they're the ones that can't either pay co-pays or don't have access to the services. So that's why we exist. Thank you for your efforts because obviously, if it weren't for people like you, we wouldn't be here either. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.[490.52][490.52](applause)
Ms. May, thank you very much. If you happen to have an extra packet, the press is right behind you on the aisle, and they might like to have some information to work with. So we always try to give them everything we can.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to come back another time.
Thank you so much. We...I'm going to stand to read this one. We are, I'm very pleased to be able to make this proclamation. This is National Police Week, starting May 15th for the next week following that. It's honoring our heroes. It's National Police Week. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas citizens of Bastrop gather to recognize and honor our law enforcement officers for their faithful service and sacrifice while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bastrop Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Bastrop Police Department. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas 33 fallen heroes have been added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, three of whom were killed in the state of Texas, and including 124 officers killed in the line of duty in 2015. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 28th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the eve of May 13, 2016. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Ken Kastelus, do proclaim May 15, 2016 through May 21, 2016, as Police Week in Bastrop, Texas. And publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And I have had the seal affixed, and I ask for your support of what I have signed by And Chief, I want you to receive this and make any comments you would like. And I hope you will share this with, I know you've got people out working and maybe sleeping and getting ready to go on duty, but please share this with all of them as well. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. I just want to say that there's no way we could do it without y'all's support, but more importantly, everybody's standing up here. These guys and girls are absolutely the best law enforcement officers we have in the state of Texas, and I'm very proud to serve for them. Thank you.
I have another proclamation, and this is related. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike to motorcycle safety issues, to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities, through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is a responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists and to obey all traffic laws. And whereas motorists are encouraged to become aware of the inherent dangers involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike, to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore, I, Ken Kastelus, Mayor of City of Bastrop, do proclaim the month of May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the city of Bastrop, and urge all residents to do their part to increase motorcycle safety and awareness in our community. And we have caused the seal to be placed on this. I hate to tell you, I've forgotten your name already. Will you come forward and introduce yourself and receive this for us? And I thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. I'm Bob Johnson. I appreciate you speaking and taking the time to bring awareness to this, so.
Well, thank you very much.[864.56][864.56](applause) Ann, I'm not aware of any citizens' comments requests, but you are. So let's see what we got. This is a very important time for us. Gary prayed about the kind of democratic process that we engage in in this country and how grateful we are for that, and this is part of it. First I have is Bonnie Coffey.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity. I am here to address comments made at the last City Council meeting regarding the three City Council members on the Board of BEDC. I was kind of surprised to hear several comments about how some council members hadn't heard that this was a problem. I beg to differ. I have written the mayor several times regarding this issue. I have made comments at a BEDC meeting. On at least two instances, I have appeared before City Council to express this very concern. The fact that some of you hadn't heard any comments about this problem leads me to believe that, one, you didn't pay any attention when I made the citizen comments; two, you heard what I said but chose not just to ignore me; or, three, you heard what I said but don't comprehend the concept or concern about the imbalance of power or the appearance of impropriety. I am here tonight to make sure that you clearly understand that there are people in our town who feel that having three City Council members who also serve as voting members on the Bastrop Economic Development Board is a problem. Just because you say you don't think it's a problem doesn't make it all better or okay. You are an elected official, and your charge is to consider all citizen concerns. Any ethical elected official should be concerned with the appearance of impropriety. At the last meeting, Councilmember Jackson approached me to let me know that according to state law, there could be four councilmembers on BEDC, and I will share with you what I shared with him. Just because you can doesn't mean you should.
Thank you.
Good evening. Come in peace. I was coming to give y'all each one a city council and a matter's role. We're having our community picnic in the north end, and I was one person to give y'all an invitation, hoping that somebody could come out and just to be out there. It's going to be this Saturday, being the 14th, at Jill Hodges Park. That's the park that we are looking forward to upgrade. In the north area, there are more children out there than in that area that really need a place that they could enjoy themselves, a walk-in distance to. And so we're gathering there this Saturday just to bring the community together, and maybe somebody could go out there and hear the concerns that they have for that park. So I'm going to pass out an invitation to each one of y'all.
I believe it's, is it Jim, is it Knodler?
It's N-O-D-L-E-R.
How do I pronounce it? How do you spell it? A D, I see. Would you please come forward?
Okay.
I got a N-O-C-L-E-L-E-R, but I see now it's a D.
I'm a product of the public schools. What can I say?
(laugh) Thank you for addressing it.
What I would like to talk about is our recent boiled water notice. I live in the Piney Ridge subdivision. Apparently, there was a big leak there that resulted in a reduced pressure, and it was sometime fairly early in the morning. Excuse me. We didn't receive this...
Would you, hang on a second. Mike, is this in your report? Is it in your report? Would, I would prefer that you wait and address this during Mike's report because it's actually on the agenda.
Not a problem. I'd be glad to.
Thank you. And Mayor Protim will remind me to call on you when we get to that appropriate section. Any more citizens' comments? We are now to announcements. Kay and Doc, anything to report on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee?
No, I don't think we've met since we talked about this last time.
Okay. Thank you. Just a couple, some items there to notify you, we're going to work on some items on June 7th and some other things, dates to be determined. We now move to the City Manager's informational report, and Mike?
The first item that I would like to bring to the attention of the council is the water usage for the period of April 1st through May 8th. If you had an opportunity to look at my report, you will note that on April 28th, the water production was a little over two and a half times the normal production that we've been monitoring, and that was a direct result of a severe leak in the Piney Ridge subdivision. We did have an employee go out and hand-deliver the mooring notices, which was, which meant the state's requirement for the timeline. There were a couple he couldn't reach the door, the gate, and has no code, so he hung some on a gate. We also sent out a reverse 911 call to all those customers near affected. If their phone number wasn't current, although we try to remind people to keep that updated frequently, that's why we sent out the notice. But the notices and the door hangers, again, if there's a gate or something we can't get through, we can just put it on the closest location, and those were within the state guidelines. Do you want to take comment?
Yeah, yeah, we need to do that now. So Mr. Knodler, would you come forward now and make your comments? And I will say that this is a posted item, so we might or might not have some questions for you, but we're free to do that.
The, I'm happy to. Well, my question is with the posting of the notice. My understanding is that the water break was fairly early in the morning because that's when we experienced the low water pressure. I did not receive any notice on my door. I don't have a gate. There was none on my mailbox. The reverse 911 call did not come until after 5 o'clock that day. My daughter, who lives next door, didn't receive her notice until the following day. So to me, that's really not a good thing if you've got water that's possibly contaminated and you don't hear about it for many, many hours. And that's basically what I wanted to bring up, is that whoever said that they came around that morning and posted these in a timely manner, somebody is, shall we say, not exactly correct.
What is your address, sir?
197 Laurel Lane.
Okay, thank you. And what is your daughter's address?
181.
Laurel Lane.
Laurel Lane, yeah.
Thank you. Mike, any further comments or?
No, I will check into his concerns and report back to the council next council meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Kay?
I was just going to say, this reverse phone warning has usually worked out really well. I'm glad Mike's going to check on this. We need to be posted right away. Thank you for coming. Worth it telling us.
The other thing with that is at 5 o'clock, of course, we tried to go on the city website and see what was going on, and there wasn't anything under the emergency management, which is why I would assume that would appear. I didn't see anything on the city website until the next day.
Mike, on the reverse 911, we, anybody else, Mr. Knodler, I've got it. Thank you very much.
We concentrated, we have the ability to concentrate a reverse 911 in an area of the city, and that's where it went out to.
So, but the reverse 911 is only numbers that we have in our system, correct?
That's correct.
But could a person, like my cellphone, could I call in and say, please put my cellphone on your, on your system?
I believe we can.
Because I assume you only have my house number for my account.
Sure. And I think as technology has changed, I mean, I have a landline in my house, but I very seldom anymore ever use it.
Yeah.
And so, but I will confirm that.
I think that's a good question. If, that might be an insert in the bill sometime if that's what it requires, and more information the city has, the better off we are. Kay?
I'd like to ask the chief to come and tell us again how we can be sure that we're on that reverse phone call. I know you post that occasionally, how to do that. Could you just tell everyone so everyone will know?
I think we're talking about two different systems.
Oh, okay.
The reverse 911 can be used for water moles, but that's not what was used this time. This time, it was the utilities, so utilities would need to answer those questions because I don't, I don't know how theirs works.
And they probably would have used the telephone numbers that were given at the time service was established. That's why I'm saying, I've been in my house 10 years, and
Thank you, Chief.
And my usage of, over that 10-year timeframe, from my landline to my cellphone, has changed considerably. In fact, my wife and I talked about just getting it disconnected because we don't ever use it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have the same concern as Jim Knodler, Mike. I live at 238 Laurel Lane, and we didn't get a notice either. We have a gate that's always open, and the timeline that I understand is at 6:00 PM on the 27th, the city puts something on its website, and the phone calls went out at 6:30 PM, which we didn't get. And on the subject of phone numbers, I do have a copy of my utility bill, and it tells me on the back to, if I have any change of numbers, Mike, to fill them out. And I have no idea what number the city has for me. It would be really helpful if up on the front that, that phone number appeared, then I would know if you have the right one or not. Someone could type in a wrong number.
Okay, thank you.
I think it, according to the paper, the city sent out a tweet at 9:34 PM, and I think that's kind of in an area where there are a whole lot of retired people like myself. Tweeting really doesn't do a lot for us. And the Bastrop advertiser picked it up and put it on Facebook, which my beautiful, smart wife Connie noticed, and that's how we got our word on the thing the next day, is from the advertiser Facebook. And we also did not get noticed, notified when it was lifted. And this is really my opportunity to talk to you, Mike. I already talked to Trey Jobe, and he said there'd be some changes made, and I think they're needed changes, and I think you're going to say, or have said, you complied with state law, and that, to me, that's arguable. I think on a scale of 1 to 10, the notification procedure, 10 being the best, was about a 1. I think on item number three of the state law, it says you'll provide a name of a water official, assist official for contact, and there will, to my knowledge, there's no names. Item number four, it said the official's phone number and other useful contact numbers will be published. The public and TCEQ must be able to reach one of the numbers that you list. And what we all got was what Mr. Knodler said was a recording.
Charlie, you're about out of time. Let me see if Mike has any response.
I'm, I'm going to have to look into this because I'm not going to deny or confirm anything that was, has been stated because this is the first that's been brought to my attention.
Right.
But it will be reported at the next council meeting.
And that's what we're here for. Charlie, I hope you will contact any of us, especially me, for the other items you have to say. Appreciate that you've talked to Trey, and I just need to divide by our...
Okay. I'll be out of town the next few meetings, and I'm eager to find out what changes y'all implement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, would you continue?
On item B, just a condensed summary of what I've stated here, some of you did contact me between the last council meeting and tonight, concerned about the progress on the Chestnut Street Fire Station renovation project. A couple of things, we had seven rainy days in the month of April, and the contractor did not want to put it on until all the moisture was out, and that was a problem previously. Secondly, the tab tube-type material that the veneer brick product is attached to on the front wall would kind of flex back and forth when the doors opened, and the contractor did not want to put the brick on there, being concerned it might crack it or it would break. And so the contractor and the engineer for... And so, the contractor and the engineer for the job got together, they did some initial structural repairs to enhance the structural integrity of the wall, and now they're moving forward. And as I said, should be done by the end of the month or close to it, depending upon weather conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Just briefly, I've given you an update on the rodeo arena. And as I state down here, I, I hope that you've had time or will have time to, to look at the rodeo arena grounds inside the rodeo arena. As the council is aware, in my earlier life, I was very active in calf roping, participated numerous rodeos, and cannot express the importance of having the rodeo arena grounds in the conditions that are depicted in Exhibit B, for the safety of the livestock and the riders. And I want to commend Trey, Jason, and the city crews, who have worked very hard to bring that rodeo arena back in a more professional setting. The Texas Department of Transportation State High 71 and 95 overpass, just briefly, all issues with the Union Pacific Railroad have been resolved by TechDOT. The best projection that we could get from Ms. Diana Schultz is they're trying to have a groundbreaking either June the 1st or 2nd with the pre-construction meeting around that same timeframe. So, I would anticipate that construction would be on, in full, full bloom, I would say, I guess, by the end of June. And I will keep the council apprised of that project. Item G is just an update. We're going to work, now that we've got all the materials in and the bus shelter metal has been delivered, the crews will mobilize and start installing that. I did get one comment back when I sent this notice out to the council, that we are facing the shelter on, how to say, at the corner of Linden and Main, and where we're placing it is both a school bus stop and a cars bus stop. And so, that was, one of y'all made a concern about that, and I, I wanted to get that to your attention. Just a brief update on the comprehensive plan, chapters 1 through 4 have been reviewed by the steering committee. All, all four chapters are posted on the website. A draft of chapter 7 Parks and Recreation has been submitted to the staff for preliminary review. Chapter 5 Land Use and Community Image, Transportation, and Cultural Arts and Tourism are being drafted currently by the consultant. The next steering committee meeting will be scheduled following a staff review of chapter I have been working on the shelter grant project, coordinating the various aspect sequentially that has to be done in accordance with the HUD requirements of the grant, but I, I think we're now, we're moving forward in the progress. And I just gave you a brief summary of why I chose not to pursue the monolithic building. There just wasn't time to address a, an alternate way that we would have to do it with the time left that we've got to get this project complete. Item J is discussion regarding the city-owned lot adjacent to the convention center. Attached as Exhibit C is a proposed side plan and related improvements that I'm recommending to the council for that adjacent lot on Chestnut Street. This proposed layout, in my opinion, will make utilization of the lots for various types of activities feasible in the future. Also included in Exhibit C is a cost estimate at approximately $38,600 for materials. The planned improvements will be, if the council's agreeable, would be put in by the Public Works Department. Finally, I'm recommending that the council, that the responsibility of the Main Street Department to oversee the activities that would occur on the lot, should the council direct me to implement this program and make these improvements. Also attached are the various forms and rules governing the use of the lot, different types of activities. Sarah Braun's done a very good job in getting an initial draft to us. We did discuss yesterday that you're looking for a little bit more expansive use, other than just the farmer's market, and we had a discussion about, like, at Christmas time, somebody might want to sell Christmas trees there, and the side plant that you see reflects that possibility, or if somebody wanted to come in here and sell some hay, or something of that nature. We're, we're, we're trying to meet the council's goal and generate some revenue from that lot. Item K?
Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and see if we have some direction for you, Mike, okay?
Okay, sure.
You've made that great report. I'll, I'll comment, and I think I may have helped start this conversation. You and I have talked about it for a long time. I want to compliment you on taking a very broad view of being as inclusive as I think anybody could possibly be, keeping it in a manageable sort of operation. You have a couple of questions that the, it would be the director, your direct report, Main Street?
Right.
Director who would oversee this.
Right.
And you don't foresee our needing that property for the convention center for some time forward, and for this would be a good expense? And we would get, we would get some of it back from revenue?
I would, you know, I don't see us using it, needing it for the next five to seven years.
So, if we were to say, Mike, go ahead and get this whole thing signed, sealed, delivered to us for approval at the next meeting, that would be in keeping with what you're asking?
I, I think so, yes, sir.
So, I ask the other council members, sir, I'm sorry.
It will also require one other issue to direct me to notify the 1832 farmer's market that the lease, the 30-day, month-to-month lease we have, we're not, we're ending the lease, and I think I have to give them 30 days' notice under the contract.
But if we continue the farmer's market, which we probably will, then, I hope we will, then 1832 will be invited to participate in that, too. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, but I did put in my report that they do not want to open it up to, they, they like the idea of what we've done, they like the idea of the layout, but they're not in agreement to opening it up to other farmers. And because they feel that will be additional competition. And if you recall, Ms. Nancy Wood, when she was our Main Street Director, started the concept of a culinary district in the downtown, and Sarah has picked that up and is wanting to tie that in with the culinary district that the council established in the downtown. And we collectively feel that it should be open to more than one group. And I, I just don't think we can be selective and, and say who can come in and who can't.
I want to start growing beets in my backyard and bring them down here. I can get a vendor license like everybody else. Don't worry, I'm not going to start growing beets, but.
All right.
I think Main Street is the perfect organization to, to run this.
Other council members?
I think it would be right if somebody offered a motion. I think we need a motion here to direct you, right, Mike? That's what you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
I would move, I, I like the plan, I would move to go forward with the plan as proposed.
Second.
Any discussion? So, this is going to be to direct Mike to fully develop this and bring it back to us at the next meeting, next regular meeting.
Yep.
I think we're ready to vote, Ann.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike, I think this is, we're in the last stages of a pretty long conversation. And I think it's the way this community should operate. We've heard from a lot of people, the council's weighed in. You've come up with a, a good plan for us, and I'm proud that we're moving ahead this way. Item K?
Yes. I have, the chief financial officer and I have put together the fiscal year '17 budget calendar. I know the council just feels like it was yesterday that we got done. We wanted to give you our projections of when we see council meeting dates fitting the timeframe to, after we've heard from the council, go back and look at some budget issues. We also have to take into account, we have some statutory requirements of posting our tax rate, and so that we don't fall into a problem if we don't get our tax rate published at the appropriate date. So, we had to balance a lot of different issues in putting this calendar together. There is a little flexibility, and we tried to schedule the budget workshop for the odd Tuesday out, or to, so the council can focus strictly on the budget when we meet.
So, that, like, for example, that June 21 preliminary budget workshop would be for the council to, you know, weigh in about priorities and
Right.
To give you some indication of what we'd like to see?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, one is we're in the depth of under my management administrative activities. We're working through the bond refinancing process. We did have a rating call for, with standard and four this morning. It was about two hours, and it's an in-depth evaluation of our financial position going into the refinancing. I feel, I think we had a very good review, and I think if nothing else, we'll maintain our current rating. I, I think they were pleased to see that we had strong fund balances, but they did agree that we shouldn't get too bloated on our fund balances, and they were very impressed that the council is allocating those for one-time purchases, especially the investment that you raid, made in the streets, the investment that you have, are making in the police department, so we can build that out. And so, I'm, I'm hoping, we're going to market my first day back on the 19th, and I hope to be able to bring some very good rates into the council on the 24th for our council meeting. Lastly, I have handed out to you, did we hand those out, Ann, those, the judge's ruling? As most of you are aware, I was somewhat difficult to get ahold of this past week. And the reason for that is, if I can find mine, oh, here we go. I was in court regarding the Bastrop County at all, and that was Bastrop County, BISD and the city of Bastrop versus Pond Forest Investment Groups. We went late Friday night, and then Judge Campbell granted the following declaratory relief requested by the county BISD and the city. The real estate contract is terminated and null and void and has no effect. Judge Campbell adopted the plans, grounds, and evidence that the contract is terminated and null and void. Please note that this ruling was unexpected because of the ruling of the termination of the real estate contract was not set for trial on May the 3rd. However, it was argued that the real estate contract was not in agreement, and the evidence primarily from Mr. Laffeywell established the contract was terminated by the sellers on the 181st day. Secondly, the judge ruled that the defendants, Pond Forest Investments, inappropriately allocated their votes in the changing of, of the June 2000 CCRs and the June 2000, or September 2050 CCRs. All of those were reversed and, and ruled null and void. The severance declaration, taking Pond Forest Unit Number 6 out of the Pond Forest Home Association, was invalid and of no force in effect. And the board members of Cliffside Al, Drusilla Rogers, and Brandon Winkler were reinstated back on the board by the court judge's order, and that the people who replaced them, John Garner and William Haskie, are not valid members. All other items voted on by the members of Pond at special meetings conducted on February 26th is the only issue that remains somewhat up in the air. It was a very long week, but to come out with a ruling of this nature, I think it's been a long haul over the last two and a half years. But I think the work, and I've given you a copy of the complete judge's ruling, he ruled on this about 8:30 on last Friday night, and be glad to answer any questions that the council may have on this or any other matter in my city manager's report.
I want to say publicly, Mike, that I know that we haven't been able to talk about this, the council, because a lot of it was litigation, and so, we've talked about it, though, not in a public way. And that was necessary, and I'm not saying there was anything wrong with that. I want to say that, that Judge Poppy, if, if citizens that are listening tonight are concerned, have not read Judge Poppy's
No, Judge Campbell, Judge Campbell.
Judge Poppy's article in last week's
I'm sorry.
Sat, was it the Saturday newspaper? Gave a up-to-this-moment report of what was going on. And he wrote it, of course, before the judgment came down. And now that Judge Campbell has ruled this way, you've got the, the full story. The, I don't think there's any question that the city council and the school board and the commissioners' court made a very effective use of our responsibilities by carrying this through and preventing an injustice. And the Judge Campbell, we fought all along that, once the judge looked at this, that we would receive this kind of ruling. We have spent a fair amount of money. We will get it back when those lots are sold. We have opened up one of the most beautiful and wonderful sections of Bastrop County, especially after the fire, for development. And the work that Mike and JC and our other attorneys have put in on this has been extraordinary. I want to say that one thing that Judge Poppy's article did not say, and it's not a big deal, but in a way, but it's worth saying, city of Bastrop was close to taking the lead on almost every level of this, these many years we've been through this. Council was, was fearless, Mike was determined, JC was very supportive of what we were doing. I think we have done something very important for our community. And it needs to be said now that we're at the edge of, of having it entirely fixed. And the most importantly, we have some citizens that live in that section, who are part of the city of Astrop. They appeal to many of us time and time and time again for relief from what seemed to be totally unjust to them, and I think we have delivered on that. So, Mike, I applaud you and your staff, and I thank the school board and the commissioners' court for participating, and everybody that was involved in it, JC, Mike, all of us, council members that are not here any longer, and others, because it's been ongoing on for a very, very long time. Now, Willie wants to make a comment.
Mayor, I couldn't say too much more than you said, but I think you touched on everything as far as probably what needs to be said, that especially the citizens that lived on Briar Forest and part of Unit 6 that were asking for help from the commissioners' court in, in the city of Astrop. But I had an opportunity to show up Tuesday morning, I think, for a couple of hours, and then, and that was all, I tended to hear what was going on. And superintendent was, seemed like he was always at the meetings. County judge was surely representing the, the county and the commissioners' court. You know, over the weekend, I had received different calls from people in that area thanking, thanking us, but the real thanks go to Mike and Charles, the legal, legal attorney, for, for all the time and effort, and Mr. Cagle, that was representing two of the directors of the, the POA. But I, I, that's what I told the people that asked me to thank, I said, you need to call the city manager and thank him and Charles Bundren for the job that they did, because they were, they both received very high compliments from the, the citizens that were, that live on Briar Forest. So, they were, they were very pleased and thought how professional our staff was, and Charles, and, and representing the efforts of everyone on all the entities.
Thank you.
Doc? I'd just like to ditto what Mayor Protem has said, and I got a chance to talk to several people over the weekend, including the judge, and thanked him for his, for the article that he wrote in the newspaper, because several people had told me about that, and so I shared it on my Facebook page and let people know about it even more so. And citizens that lived in that community were also applauding the city and the county and everyone else for working together. But I wanted to also carry through and thank Mike and Bundren for all the work that they have done, and I'm just very pleased that we can now speak publicly about some of the things that were going on, because it's been a rough battle for the last few years getting this done, and we're getting closer to getting it complete. We aren't through completely yet, but it is something that I'm proud to say that the city of Astrop took the lead on, and thanks to our city manager and the team that we had to help with that, it's been very successful.
Thank you.
Mike, anything else?
No, I just think that a, a real positive out of this is the three entities work very closely together, and I think it enhanced our very closely together and I think it enhanced our relationships much better. And I'm hope to be able to build upon that into the future in a more positive direction for the betterment of Bastrop.
Amen. Uh, do you have anything else on your report?
No, unless y'all have any questions.
Would, I have a question for you. Would you consider talking to Trey before you leave town and rescue the mayor from having failed to ask you this week if the celebration that Pastor Nava mentioned earlier might have access to some water from some hydrant somewhere on our property? So I, that's my way of confessing I forgot to talk to you. And if I can put it in this form, I'd say it right now.
Okay, I'll, we'll work something out. We do have bottled water through BP&L.
He was thinking about, is there a way to, do we have a faucet or something up there?
Sure.
We could, we could garden hose to, so I think that's-
Okay, not a problem.
Uh, thank you for looking into that.
You bet.
Others?
Okay, Mike, thank you very much. We have a consent agenda that contains eight items, two of which are ordinances that need to have the caption read. And I will ask if anyone has any of those they would like to pull off the agenda for separate discussion. Which one?
A3.
A3, we will deal with separately. Uh, we will, anything else? We will deal with A1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, including A2, consideration, discussion, and possible action approving the second reading of an ordinance amending section 1.15.035, ethics ordinance in the code of the ordinances of the city of Bastrop, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is left over from the April 26 meeting, item D3. Uh, is there a motion?
Move.
Move and seconded that we accept the consent agenda minus item A3. And will you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Del Rosso?
All but A3, right?
No, but AA is-
I didn't hear you say that.
No.
Yeah. One, two, three, one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you all. Item A3, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the second reading of a proposed ordinance by the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2016 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating various amounts herein, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. This also is left over from the April 26 meeting, item D5. Mr. Del Rosso?
Yeah.
Just one quick question for either Tracy or Mike. On, on page 21 at the top on the, on the, and that's what I look at mostly is general fund. The, I, it's a quick question, is the 25% over the operating budget, is it 25 or 29?
25.
It's 25.
But I will tell you, from my perspective, after spending a little two hours on our rating call today, they like to see us to be above that. They don't like to see us as much as we were. They were pleased that we were bringing it down, but I, I would say they like to see you a little bit above your stated policy.
Well, I, I don't argue that. And I, I had spoken with Ms. Waldron a few days ago and I got, I was looking at the budget book and that's what confused me, because in the budget book it called for 29, so I didn't know, it was supposed to be 29 or at 25. So anything above 25 and above?
I think the budget book may have stated where we were.
At that time when the, when we were, okay.
Before we had the audit.
Okay. That was my question.
Do you want to move that we approve it?
Sure.
Is there a second? Moved, uh, council member by Mayor Protem and, uh, seconded by Councilmember Jackson?
Can you read it or not?
I just read it. Uh, you want me to read it again?
I'm not going to ask you anymore.
Yeah, I did, I did read it, didn't I? Okay, uh, any discussion? And Willie, you're pretty comfortable with what you heard?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Uh, I think we're ready to vote.
Mayor Protem Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McInally?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Thank you all. Item B1, let me say this is a public hearing and it's separated from item D3, which is consideration for action. Uh, we'll ask you all to think as we go through this, if you want to go ahead and vote, or move to the vote after this, or separated as it is separated on the chronological order of the agenda. Item B1, public hearing for a request that the council grant two variances to the Fairview Cemetery Ordinance, 2009-31, Section 15 dot 16 dot F, stating that mausoleum and crypts are not permitted in the Fairview Cemetery, and two, Section 15 point 16 dot E concerning maximum height of markers, stating that height restrictions, monuments, markers, memorials, or tombstones in Fairview Cemetery shall be four feet in height or less unless approved by the city manager. The two variances requested ask the council to allow construction and placement of an above-ground mausoleum structure, which will, it says will contain, but I assume it means which will contain human remains in the Fairview Cemetery at the total height of seven feet two inches, which exceeds the height allowed by the city code by three feet and two inches. Ms. Waldron.
Good evening. Just wanted to go over the two variance requests each independently. Variants, one request is for construction and placement of an above-ground mausoleum structure which will contain human remains in the Fairview Cemetery. As you just read, our ordinance states that mausoleum and crypts are not permitted in our Fairview Cemetery. And under the Health and Safety Code, Title 8, subtitle C, Chapter 711, Section 711.001, definitions, a mausoleum, mausoleum means a durable fireproof structure used or intended to be used for entombment. Entombment means that in, interment in a crypt, and the definition of a crypt means a chamber and a mausoleum of sufficient size to intern human remains. The variance request number two is a construction placement of an above-ground mausoleum and marker structure that will have a total height of seven feet two inches, which exceeds the height allowed by city code by two feet and two inches. And it states in the code and the ordinance where that's located. This is a, a drawing that is in your agenda packet that is proposing a seven-foot-two-inch structure. The height of the, the bell itself is within the four-feet height allowed by ordinance and the bottom portion would be a mausoleum defined by state code. In conclusion, staff has concerns regarding the allowance of mausoleum due to the lack of certainty regarding the responsibilities and state standards for having above-ground burials in the cemetery. And the variance requested for the height is not a slight variance, but a three-foot variance request.
Eric? Uh, counsel?
Yeah, I, I, I want to know what the problem is. I, I mean, what is the problem? Why do we have a four-foot regulation? And why don't we allow mausoleums in the, in the grave, in the cemetery?
Um, I can only speak to the ordinance which was in place when I started. Um, I know that there were health and safety codes as far as a mausoleum is concerned. The ordinance established the four-foot. We have had variances in the past that were inches above the four-foot that, that we've been able to approve. This is, is, you know, approximately the height of that flagpole back there. It's-
I, I just don't understand why we have a rule that, that we don't know what the backup is for it. I'm, I'm, I'm not addressing this to you, Tracy. I just don't understand why we have that rule in the first place. I'd like to know the reason for it and why we can't adjust so that if people would like these other options, they can have them.
I, I would say, I probably won't be able to answer your entire question, but our predecessor, Ms. Carl Stovall, worked very closely with the cemetery board in developing the ordinance that was ultimately brought before the council and approved. And I don't know the basis for several of the things in there, other than it was a collective agreement between Ms. Stovall and the board that these should be our standards.
I, I may have missed backup somewhere, but I don't see anywhere that this, I believe this is Henry Bell's request. I haven't seen anywhere on our report that this is from Mr. Bell, so-
His letters are included in the packet.
I missed it. Where, so, okay, well, what, what is there besides the caption? That we, information that we have?
All the letters he submitted with the drawing and the health code.
Okay, it should be in the folder, item B1, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I don't have it. So I apologize for that comment. You mentioned, let me go to this first. You mentioned, Mike, I think that the, or maybe somebody mentioned that the cemetery advisory board dealt with this before we passed the ordinance. Uh, I have to admit, I think I was one of the people that voted for the ordinance, but I see the chairman of that board here. Terry, would you be willing to tell us what you know, number one, about the development of the ordinance? Do you remember anything?
I'll do my best. Can you come up here?
Yeah, yeah, come up, tell us who you are and, uh, thank you, ma'am.
I'm Terry Sanders. I'm the chairman of the cemetery advisory board, and it is an advisory board with the final power resting with you guys, thank goodness. But when the cemetery was taken over by the city after many years, that's about five or six years ago, the city took over the cemetery and the rules and regulations were established, as Mike said, by the cemetery advisory board and, what was the other name you gave me, Mike?
Uh, Ms. Stovall worked with you.
Stovall, yes. And at our last meeting, we came up with the idea that maybe we should relook at those rules and regulations so we wouldn't be having this problem we're having right now. That's the main point I'm trying to make. And one of them is the height recommendation, because you know there are, the correct word is obelisses, you know, out there, they're thirty and forty foot tall and they're beautiful. So I think that, my opinion, that height regulation should definitely be addressed and you guys wouldn't have to be dealing with that today. And there's some other issues in there, such as concrete above the grave sites and, you know, there're just, there's lots of concrete out in that cemetery above grave sites. That possibly needs to be addressed, but I'm digressing too far here. Getting back to this issue.
Well, do you remember, first of all, do you remember anything when we passed it about why we would have said we didn't want anything up above ground like that?
We probably weren't thinking.
I've already said I wasn't thinking.
I said I can see no reason in the world to have a height limitation when we have sixty-foot statues up there.
Exactly.
So I think that was a mistake on our part.
So let me ask you then, I, I understand that, that your board was asked to look at this issue, is that correct?
Yes, and looking at this issue, that Mr. Henry, only Henry Bell could bring this to us. But anyway, Mr. Bell brought it to us and we basically, and I have another board member here, we could see that it does no harm, it might break a few regulations, so we unanimously approved his, uh, his variances and what he wants to do there. And I had another point I wanted to make.
Your, your, your recommendation from your board is that we approve the variance?
Yes, it was unanimous. And whether or not it's a mausoleum, to me is questionable. I, to me, it's, it's, it's above-ground burial. I don't, I guess you have to look into how you describe a mausoleum. And maybe that's one of the things that needs to be changed and described that more accurately.
But it's whatever those things they have in New Orleans all over the place, right? Whatever it's called. Henry, you want to talk to us?
Yes, sir, I could, for just a minute. Let me pass these out, because I have an idea.
You, you are, you have permission to distribute this?
Thank you, sir. But I'm choked a bit.
No, I'm, this, he's, he's the subject of this thing. We let Henry talk as long as he wants to, but he, I'm sure he'll be aware that the longer he talks, the worse his case is going to be. I mean, I'm just guessing, I'm just guessing, Willie.
I'm sure that'll be right. I'll be real quick. Mayor and city councilmen, I, I thank you for letting me appear. It's an honor to be here as it always is. Uh, I've, I've given you a letter, basically, we've got a couple of letters dealing with this, uh, to just cut to the chase about why I'm here. And I'm the, I'm an only child, I was incredibly fond of my mother. She died from lung cancer in 1963 and the day before she died, she asked me, she said, you know, "Henry, will you not bury me in the ground?"
Mr. Bell, I'm sorry, can you-
Sure.
Into the microphone?
You're on television, so just play to that.
Anyway, she said, "Please, don't bury me in the ground." And in 1963, I didn't have enough money to do anything, I was going to school and all that. But she had, when she was a very young girl, she had almost drowned, uh, and so she was very claustrophobic and that was the reason for her request. And so now things have changed and, uh, so I would like, I found a great guy at Capitol Monument. So what we would like to do is, and I, it's just simply a one-casket move, and I, I call it in, in the letter, I just, I think what we did here was an above-ground tomb and that's all that is. And so we're just simply just putting the little monument on top of that. Lord, I, I was going to say, everybody on earth, we've been up there since 1845, but the main thing is it's, I'm just trying to grant my mother's last request and, uh, so it's, and this was, as Mr. Sanders says, approved 100% by the cemetery advisory board. And I, there's a couple more things that I just wanted to mention to you real, real Number one is that we wouldn't even have this land that this is on, and this is in your package, and it, you, you kind of have to look at the package because Terry didn't have a chance to get these on the board. I've got several things in here, I think, that, that might be helpful. The first one, and I know y'all can't see this, is simply a drawing of, uh-
Can you come back to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, it's a drawing of this section which is in of the cemetery association, not the cemetery association, but this part of the cemetery. And there, uh, it's on the one hill in Bastrop, and that's on top of the hill and all the bells are buried up there and have been forever. Now, if you turn it this way, this is Highway 95, the, the hill looks down this way. And so about 20 years ago, I went to Carl Spooner and I said, "Carl, the hill is just eroding, it's just sliding away and it's going to back up to the old Bell Graves up here, and would you let me put up a retaining wall?" And he said, "Sure." So we built a retaining wall and filled that in and that is good today, it is holding everything today. The reason I mention that is we want, want to put mother's above-ground tomb right there in this area and the little monument will be on top and this just looks out toward Bastrop. It's, it's a gorgeous view. But anyway, the, the land that this is on is what I would call reclaimed land. It, it, it wouldn't be there if, if we hadn't done that. So that's one thing I wanted to mention to you. The next thing in here is mother's grave and, uh, that, that's the first shot. Next shot is all the bells up there on top of the hill. And it's kind of hard to see, but the erosion was getting right to the back of this first row of those that are there. And also the, the tomb that's up there is well above seven feet. I think it's about 10 feet. So one of the, the monuments. And of course, again, these have been there for, the oldest one is my great-great-grandfather's in 1845 and all of his brothers and everything else are up there too. And of course, my dad and, and my grandmother and grandfather. The next picture is, uh, basically just shots of the retaining wall. And the only reason I wanted to show you this is to show how we held that up and the sides of the retaining wall, just to keep basically the whole thing from sliding down the hill. And so in addition to that, the next shot is a, just a view as you look down the hill from the actual burial site. And the last one, I believe, that I've got here, if I can get this out here, is just the, it's a topographic map of the area. And so from Highway 95, which is right up here, looking at the top of the hill, I think it's 80 feet. So this thing drops incredibly drastically right down to 95. So what we're- drops incredibly drastically right down to 95. So what we're, we want to do is mainly just maintain the hill up there and put mom where she wants to be, which is above-ground and not looking at that. And you mentioned the Cancer Association, ma'am. That is a truly worthwhile thing, especially the march and, you know, that kind of thing. And I think it's something that, you know, we've always liked to do. Let me think, is there anything else that might be of interest to anyone? I kind of really enjoyed this, and I wish I had done it a little earlier, but I didn't have the money to do it earlier. I'm just open to questions, and I can't imagine why anyone wouldn't want this. It doesn't affect anybody but me. I mean, again, this is right there, and we've got, and we've run out of grave space is the other problem, and that's the good thing about the retaining wall. So if we hadn't done this twenty-plus years ago, I don't know where we'd go, but, and I, of course, my children are interested, my grandchildren are interested, and everybody, you know, wants to get this done. And it's a, I guess, to end it this way, I think that I had one of the absolute best mothers in the world, and she and I were very close, and it's kind of hard to not do her last time request, and so that's why I'm here.
Thanks, Henry. I want to give Terry a chance to speak again.
Yes, sir.
I want to say something in Henry's defense there, because at one time-
We need you to talk into the mic, talk into the mic if you can, Terry.
I thought he could hear me. At one time, Henry had the dimensions of what he wants to do up on the board. Do you still have that?
As far as the monument?
Yes.
Yes, I think Tracy's got that. There you are.
It's, there it is, right. If you look at those dimensions, it's slightly bigger than one grave site. A grave site, I believe, is five by eight. If you look at this, this is four and a half by eight and a half. So it's almost exactly one grave site. So I want you to get the idea, it's not some humongous mausoleum, it's just one concrete vault.
Thank you, Terry. And Gary?
Do we have other people that want to speak on this?
Well, I want to, it is a public hearing, and we don't have any other requests. Just real clear, it's a public hearing, we're not taking action here on this item.
No, I'm just going to suggest that we close the public hearing and we go ahead and do Item D3 or whatever it is.
Let me give Doc a chance.
That was what, that was what I was going to suggest as well, so.
So I'm going to close the public hearing. This public hearing on Item B1 is at a close. Do y'all want to move to D3 and deal with it, or?
Yes.
I think that's the consensus. Item D3 is, I think I need to read this again, it's exactly the same language, but this is the action item on consideration discussion of possible action on a request that the council grant two variances, Fairview Cemetery 2009-31 of our ordinance, Section 15.16F, stating that mausoleum crypts are not permitted in Fairview Cemetery, and two, Section 15.16E, concerning maximum height of markers, stating that height restrictions of monument markers, memorials, or tombstones in the Fairview Cemetery shall be four feet in height or less unless approved by the city manager. The two variances requested asked the council to allow construction and placement of an above-ground mausoleum structure, which will contain human remains in the Fairview Cemetery at a total height of seven feet, two inches, which exceeds the height of the Raabon City Code by three feet and two inches, floor is open.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
I need to approve.
Mr. Jackson.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would just like to go ahead and move that we approve the variances as outlined in Item D3 and move forward with this.
Okay.
I'd like to second that, and I'd also like to request that we take a look at the whole ordinance and with a view of changing that so people have other options.
Yeah, I think Mike's hearing that, and I know that Terry heard it and already said his board would look at it. Other discussion?
I just want to point out, you've read it several times, I do have the right to grant a variance on the height. I have granted a variance on the height, but it was three inches. And when it was this magnitude, I felt that it was more than what was intended in the ordinance for me to approve.
Yeah, I think the bigger picture issue is what Ms. McEnally raised, but right now, all we have is the possibility of a variance. Any discussion?
Right, I just wanted to agree. I was going to also suggest that you all discuss this in your future council meetings and to make sure that it is addressed, because the cemetery ordinance does need to be looked at and addressed, and I think in the future will be a good time to do that.
Thank you all. It appears we're ready to vote in.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember McEnally?
Yes.
Mayor Purtim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Thank you all for a lively conversation. I want to say to the staff, expect you to enforce our ordinances, and the council's got an opportunity to change the policy. The, we have no oil business, Item D1, consideration discussion of possible action on a presentation by Mr. Michael Jockovich, who is the area vice president and general manager of the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines Resort and Spa regarding creation of a destination marketing organization as it relates to the Bastrop Marketing Corporation and the implications as it relates to the hotel motel tax. Mike?
Yes, as stated in Item D1, on page 113 of your packet tonight, Ms. Kim Britton, director of sales and marketing for the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines and Spa, contacted me on behalf of Mr. John Vicks regarding his wishes to address the council on the items listed on the caption for the city council's agenda, so that he could make a presentation to you on those three issues.
Michael, while you come forward, I want to say, I think your presence helps remind us of, for the last ten years or more, how important the relationship between the city of Bastrop and Hyatt Regency has been. We have an extraordinary opportunity because of your presence. I know that the Hyatt Regency has supported our efforts, I know you have personally, I know you're a member of our community and a welcome one. Your status, of course, just enriches who we are in this community. And I know we'll listen very intently to what you have to say. And if Kim's helping, do you want to introduce her, or you want to introduce yourself?
I will. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City Manager Mike Talbot. I really appreciate the opportunity for me to come here and present to you my thoughts on how we should move forward. It's certainly an honor for Kim and I to be here. We represent over sixty years, and we're not sixty years old yet, but collaboratively and collectively in the hospitality industry and tourism. So we've been around for a while, we've put in a lot of years in with Hyatt, and we're very proud of that. And we're very proud of Hyatt Regency Lost Pines Resort and Spa. And I want to thank the city of Bastrop and the community for how you've engaged with this resort over the last ten years. We will celebrate our 10th anniversary on June 1st. It's going to be a special day for us. We have a lot of our associates that have been born and raised here, we're starting to see other generations come in and work as well. So that's something that, in Hyatt, we take a lot of pride in, and we will hope to continue this for many, many more years. The other thing I'll say is I'm very impressed at the development of the resort, the collaboration that existed before the resort opened, to come up with hot funds and the occupancy tax dollars that existed and that were charged to our visitors, so that we can continue to promote this area, Bastrop and the Lost Pines and the Hyatt Regency. I thought it was ingenious. And I think it's an example of what happens in some other communities, but not nearly with the passion that has existed over the last ten years. So I congratulate the leaders that put that together, Woodbine Development, that really worked hard with Hyatt and the city of Bastrop. So congratulations on that. That 10-year agreement that I referred to in the last 10 years, the Bastrop Marketing Council was formed, it's been very successful, the hotel has been successful over the last 10 years. But as everyone knows, for the last year or so, I think there's been quite a few presentations given on what should happen at the expiration of the Bastrop Marketing Council. And my presentation here is what I would recommend, based upon what I've worked in Hyatt, when I've worked in communities across the US and in Hawaii, we've had marketing associations affiliated with our resorts and hotels that I've worked in, and they've been very successful. I'm now engaged in Texas with the Hotel Lodging Association and also the TTIA, so I understand the tourism factor and how important it is to a community. So I want to offer this up, Kim is going to help drive. In this presentation, I just want to give you a little bit of what our vision statement is at the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines, and that we are well-established, we're a successful resort located in central Texas in the Lost Pines region. We create memories and traditions throughout our natural setting by season, which has been the foundation of our culture. The immediate goal at the resort is to drive group business while continuing to outperform the market in RevPAR. RevPAR is an internal term that you might see and hear, it's revenue per available room. This is how hotels take charge of their markets in the hotel industry. We will refine and grow our group market moving forward while maintaining and strategically shifting leisure travel. National exposure for the resort will help support our initiatives. We are poised to drive occupancy rate and continue with operational efficiencies. The changes in the Austin competitive landscape focuses on new inventory and renovations. Outdoor activities, nature, and Bastrop's historic small-town character are vital elements of the Lost Pines experience. New attractions are under construction east of Austin, Zip Lost Pines, Wake Porting Park, and Inland Surf Park will enhance and expand our exposure to new markets. So that's our vision, this is what I presented to leaders in Hyatt as we move forward with our business plan and our marketing ventures. Things that I want everyone to consider is that the, in the market that we live in, that the Austin room supply is growing at 8.4%, while demand is growing at 5.3%. Over the last couple of years, we've seen an influx of new hotels that are driving visitors to Austin. The JW Marriott recently opened with a thousand rooms, the Westin Austin opened recently with 366, the Hotel Van Zandt by Kimpton opened in October with 319, and we have another thousand-room property going up in construction right now off of 35 and Cesar Chavez, which will represent another 1,068 rooms. So that market landscape is what we're competing with in driving business to our resort. Multiple renovations at other properties are creating positive energy in the group segment. Good news also is our airport at Austin, Bergstrom, has serviced 11.8 million travelers last year. That is a record number for the airport, an increase of 42% over the last 10 years. And represent, listen, 10 years at the Hyatt, and now we see 42% more people coming into Austin is phenomenal. Comparatively, San Antonio serviced 8.5 million in 2015, increasing 6% over the same decade. The history of the BMC, I kind of highlighted earlier, is Woodbine Development initiated the hot tax with the city of Bastrop at the conception of the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines Resort and Spa. The agreement began in 2006 with the Bastrop Marketing Corporation and the city of Bastrop offering a 10-year agreement containing descending scale of hot funds to be paid to the BMC for marketing. The scale initiated, so it started at 75% of the hot funds and will conclude at 43%. In November of 2014, Hyatt Hotels purchased Hyatt Regency Lost Pines wholly from the Woodbine Development and the joint venture that they had to not only own the hotel and resort, but to manage it as well as we've had for the last 10 years. This purchase included the Bastrop Marketing Corporation. Hyatt has managed the Bastrop Marketing Corporation since the purchase of the resort, which was in November of 2014. A chart here just to show a little bit of how hot funds have been generated, and this is just for the Hyatt Lost Pines. This doesn't include the other hotels in Bastrop that are generating hot funds. But as most of you are probably aware, most of the hot funds are generated from the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines. Not to say that there is revenues coming from other hotels, they are, but I wanted to show how this graph represents the sliding scale over the last 10 years of the hot funds and the success that we've shown in delivering additional hot funds into the community. So you can see there are revenues starting at around $500,000, and the increase goes up to about 1.5 million after the first year, eclipsing to about 1.8. And then in 2007, 2008, we started to see a downturn in our industry and a downturn in the market subsequently. We did see the sliding scale start as far as the hot funds or the BMC funds were allocated. And then we started to see an increase in the hot funds. Now, hot funds are generated by occupancy and average rate, which really is the driver. So you can see 2011, 2012, 2013, 14 and 15, where the hot funds generated are well over $2.3 million, and that the BMC funds have been pretty stagnant and probably average about $1 million a year. So I thought it would be important that I share that with you, and all of this is obviously public information. I want to outline my recommendations because the agreement is coming to an end. My recommendation would be first to extend the current BMC agreement until December 31st, 2016. I also recommend that by June 15th, that the city of Bastrop engage with TTIA in a strategic workshop, and that we, as a community and the city, initiate a DMO that has a five-year agreement with the city of Bastrop. My recommendation is that we change the scale of funding to go into a five-year scale, but go return to the number that originally was derived at the beginning of the resort and the city of Bastrop agreement. So in the first year, it would go to 43%, and that it would conclude after five years at 75%. I do believe that a DMO should have an executive director, and I think one should be appointed no later than June 30th. I believe that the DMO should work with the city of Bastrop, and that by July 15th, formally establish a DMO as the Bastrop Adventure Bureau. By August 1st, or earlier, that an advisory board consists of nine members that will work tandemly with the executive director on marketing and promoting Bastrop and this region. By September 15, the executive director can come before city council and present the marketing campaign going forward into the future. And by the end of the year, we can dissolve the Bastrop Marketing Corporation or sooner if necessary. The immediate focus and gain, in my opinion, is that we can promote the Bastrop brand and really define what our products and experiences are. That's the purpose of a DMO, is promotion. Communication and collaboration of our stakeholder marketing plans, making sure that we define the convention center further and understand what is success at the convention center and establish a measurable goal. And that we should establish a sales-forward process and approach to generate revenue at the convention center and have a timeline to weigh that success. I also believe that we can get ahead of other communities and in our competition with Austin by exploring transportation from the airport and have in-town shuttles on a regular basis, which we're actually prototyping and beta-testing right now from the resort to the city on weekends. And as I heard earlier, that what about the rodeo concept? Is there opportunity for us? Is there a music series for us? There's so much that we have to offer. Can we collaborate with the key stakeholders in the community and bring this DMO together? And that we really do exist on the barbecue trail and really promote that. This is really what is, I believe, is our immediate focus, and I think by establishing that DMO, which I believe everyone is in agreement, is the right way to go for the city, but taking the funding that is generated by the occupancy tax dollars and determining how best should they be spent. Because there is law, and there is certain tax laws that are existing that we need to follow to pay for certain things or that we can use that funding for. And my suggestion is those, the advisory council that is put together and the stakeholders from the community- from the community can decide how best to spend that, whether it be convention center, whether it be on transportation, whether it be on marketing, billboards, promotions, digital media, website development, et cetera, and services that we offer, I think is the right direction to go for the future of the community.
Thank you. Council, questions, comments?
Could we get a copy of that presentation?
Yes, you may.
Let me, let me start off saying, Michael, we've had, this is like the fourth, I think, presentation we've had, some new, fresh new ideas here. Obviously, I'll say, I mean, extraordinary difference between what you've presented and where we're going right now is the timing. So I want to ask Mike if I'm correct in understanding where we are. We had made a decision earlier this year or late last year that what we wanted to do was to have time to work out the DMO without extraordinary pressure, and we had some rudimentary efforts, I'm not sure you're aware of, a year or so ago, and just didn't work out for various reasons. So we decided, let's see if we can extend the Bastrop Marketing Corporation contract with some changes for a period of time so that we can relax and know that everything's going smoothly like it always has, and that we would develop the DMO in the process. We are in the process now of getting a request for proposal out for a consultant to help us guide that process. So what we're talking about is, you know, maybe having that idea finished by the end of the year, and that we had, we thought, worked out a contract with an adjusted contract to the Bastrop Marketing Corporation with you all, which we're waiting to hear back from Mike to see if it's been signed or not. So that's not been signed, and June 1st, if it's not done, then we don't have anything. So is that, am I right, Mike? Is that where we stand?
I think it would be June 30th, I believe.
June 30th. So we have a month and a half or so to sort of figure out if, about our timeframe. And obviously, we're not going to make a decision tonight. It's, again, another proposal that we have. So we certainly can deal with this at our next meeting in two weeks. I wanted to see if anybody has, I just want to set the stage for that and see if anybody has any particular things to say tonight, or questions to ask of Michael.
No, I'd like to study the proposal just a little bit. I'll probably have some reports to the council. I'll probably take this to New York with me and work on it while I'm up there.
Okay, well, I'm glad that I'm wrong about the June 1st date, that it's June 30th. Kay?
Can you tell me how, what your role will be and how you will interact with the executive director of the DMO in this proposal?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I would like to have an active role, and I'd like to be one of the board members on the council. And I can tell you that I've had a lot of thought, and I've seen a lot of presentations before council. And I do believe that we are aligned with the community, and in general, this is what is necessary. So I would urge that we make a decision quickly. But my thoughts and my discussions, as of late, have been pretty deep, to the point where we have somebody in this community that I believe would be a perfect executive director for this DMO. And I can certainly offer you my thoughts on that. And that person has put in 29 years at Hyatt, and she has been our director of sales and marketing and revenue director since the opening of that resort. And she is willing to take on a new role outside of Hyatt to become the executive director, and she's standing right here next to me. And her name is Kim Britton. So this, I look at, is somebody who has the expertise that can help drive tourism, that can work with the partners that we have in the community and continue to drive success. Because it is about driving visitors either during the day, but specifically, they do need to spend the night because we want them to get charged for room and tax.
That's the whole point, yeah.
And those tax dollars can be spent in a manner which would be in collaboration with every, with the key stakeholders. So I think that is something that during the next couple of weeks that you should think about, because I think it would be a great advantage to have somebody with her caliber in this position. And when I talk about the TTIA, I urge the city and the council to consider utilizing them because they're experts in travel and tourism, and I sit on their board for the state of Texas. And they primarily consist of CVBs, DMOs, attractions throughout the state of Texas. They can offer tremendous amount of counsel and advice and help us in Bastrop with our newly-formed DMO.
Michael, would you, would you be willing to develop a little further the two things you just mentioned, the role of Kim as you foresee it, and the why you would recommend the TTIA, is that it? Group? And Mike is going to be out of town for several days, and if you would be willing to put something together and send it directly, or I guess we can do it, send it directly to us, that's okay, for council members to take a look at. Of course, Mike can see it when he gets back. That could be helpful to us, and I assume you'd be available on the 24th for us to talk about this further?
Be happy to.
Kay?
Yes. I think there are a lot of people who would be interested in knowing exactly, maybe not tonight, maybe on the 24th, whatever you prefer, but exactly how you see the stakeholder panel looking, who might be involved, and what their role would be. I think that's really important to a lot of people, and I'd like to hear about that.
We can certainly put that together, you know, and I would, I can offer my opinion, but I also believe that the TTIA can offer us a lot of counsel because they work with a lot of communities and cities throughout the state of Texas, and they could give us that advice. But I'm sure there are plenty people that would want to volunteer, and I think it would be a voluntary board, but again, key stakeholders, I think, are important on how we can drive tourism.
Okay. Gary?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we've been through this many times, discussing how we're going to go about developing the DMO, and I thought we were pretty much in agreement that Mike was going to pull together a, an RFP for a consultant to help us through the process. We've put together a plan with the existing BMC to continue. We have Kim Britton still involved in the interim, covering us and taking care of marketing through the BMC. I personally don't see the need to jump into this on the schedule that Mr. Djokovic is proposing when I really feel like we have a plan of attack here and that we should kind of go through the, go through the process.
Let me address my thoughts on that. I think the difference on this presentation is we're either going to have an extended, changed, modified contract with the Hyatt Regency for the Bastrop Marketing Corporation, or it's going to fall back on the city council as of June 30, or July 1st, I suppose it is. And I think the urgency of this one is to, is to work through that, because I think that's a decision that's independent of our process. And the reason I raised the distinction between Mr. Djokovic's timetable and ours is it's very problematic for us. So, but I think that if we decide that we need to maintain what we have, then we need to ask other questions between city manager, for the city manager and the Hyatt Regency to figure out. And I think we need to make that, to make that decision at the next meeting. And I certainly, we could certainly do it tonight, but I'd rather hear more, have a chance to, to look at it, and if, and if the council says, no, we're not, we're not going to change the momentum of what we've been doing for six months, then I know they will understand that, and then we can move on to the next question, independent of the DMO, but pursue it to the contract that we will have with them or not. Does that sound reasonable? I mean, that's, and if not, please tell me why not and push back. Mike, do you see, does that make sense to you? I mean, that we would talk about it in a couple of weeks and, because we've got to talk about the contracts as well as everything else?
Yes, we do, and as Mr. Johnovic spoke, I think we've had a very good relationship over the 10 years. Just some economic analysis that I have done based upon what they generate in hotel motel tax, what they pay in property taxes, which we don't get any property taxes, but the other taxing entities get a very large sum of property taxes generated from the Hyatt. And thirdly, when you segregate the public sector away from your employment, the Hyatt is the number-one private employer in Bastrop County. So from my perspective, they're a huge economic engine driving this county, and I think we need to be cognizant of that and that we put a structure together that continues that economic engine moving forward.
Yeah, my reading of the council and the entire community is what you said is absolutely essential. So I don't think there's any question about that, Michael, about what Mike just said.
And my sense is urgency, and that's why I'm here today, because I know there's been schedules, there's been dialogue, there's been presentations, and here it is, May 10th. So I took the opportunity to come before you to give you my thoughts because I want to see that economic engine get even bigger and grow Bastrop.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Kay, you want to say more?
Yeah, I don't see a conflict with your proposal and the direction that the council is going at all. I think it's one more consideration. I don't think we've made any decisions that are cast in stone. It's one more consideration, and I know Mike will give this a lot of thought. So I'm very happy to hear yours, and thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. And I will add that we will be involved, as you asked, would I? Absolutely. But I really don't want to manage it. The Hyatt, you know, has been managing the BMC for the last year and a half. It's time that the DMO be formed. So let's just do it.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you very much for, not only tonight, but our total relationship. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Item D2, I think for obvious reasons, I have recused myself from that. I turn the mic over to, I mean, the chair over to Mayor Pro Tim.
I'll read the next item, is consideration discussion and possible action on the donation of 1.7 acre tract for a pocket park. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. As you all know, I've been very much an advocate for parks and for recreation in our community. And a while back, the mayor and his family had approached me about, and asked me about the concept of developing a pocket park in Bastrop. He and his family own a piece of property that's been described in our packet, and it's called Ball Knob, and it's a place that's, a place of beauty, and the family has owned it, but several people in the community have used it over the years, and it's an ideal setting, in a sense, for a pocket park. They graciously, I guess, discussed it among themselves as a family and couldn't decide what else to do with it later in life, and they would like to make this a, make it as a gift to the city at a later date. So the proposal, the resolution that we have before us tonight, is to receive a piece of property for eventual use as a park. There's a resolution that's in our packet that outlines it, and it basically says, it gives you a little history of the pocket park, and it talks about how the family would like to see it transferred over to the city. They wanted to return it to the citizens of Bastrop eventually as a small park for recreational use and for local citizens, and as a tourist attraction by offering to donate the existing 1.7 acres to the city with a few stipulations. The brothers would remain or would retain a life estate, the two surviving brothers, which would be our mayor and his brother Richard, continuing with the privileges until their death. And then the life estate would, that would, it would evoke that life estate clause. All mineral and other rights connected with the land will be conveyed to the city by the brothers. And during the exercise of the life estate, the brothers would also not construct anything else on the site. They would not change it in any way. They would want to make sure that it would still be a viable source of recreation for the community. They just asked that the city would arrange for the necessary legal documents for the Kestrel's brothers to convey the land to the city on a conservancy at the city's designation to create a park in their honor within five years of the termination of the life estate clause. I think it's a wonderful gesture from that family, and with its history and with the possibility of another pocket park for us in our community, I would just, I'm here to speak in favor, and after discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we do this. But I'll leave it open for discussion, Mayor Pro Tim.
Kay?
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to ask Mike, would there be any charges to the city for this? What costs would there be for the city?
Well, you know, it would be, I haven't really had much time to analyze this because, as I stated earlier, I was in court all week last week.
Sure.
And, you know, I'd have to look at the location, the logistics, the terrain, and also I would want to get some input from the Parks Board, whom we have charged with, looking at the development of our park system. And also, I have mentioned this before, and I would have to study this, but would we be better off initially putting it in the Parks and Wildlife Trust while we decide exactly what we're going to do with it? Because then when we bring it out of the trust, we can use the value of the property as our matching fund for a grant if we were going to do that.
Exactly. I was, that was going to be part of my other comments, Mike, as well, because if we put it in that trust, we can utilize the funds from that trust for grants and for other funding that will help support the project. And it's just a wonderful, it's a great match, I think, if we were able to do that and put it in that trust or as a conservancy. And, you know, it wouldn't be an immediate gift because they do have a life conservancy with it, so, and they asked it five years after that time that this happened, but it would be in the trust unless they decide at another date to change it over. And so it's a win-win situation for us. And as far as fees and things, Ms. McAnally, of course, the legal, you know, transfer of the title and deeds and things like that, and of course, the normal upkeep and things like that for anything that a park would do would be the things that would come along with it. But I think the value of putting it in the trust, once we're in control of it, to use it as a matching grant for the park would be a wonderful idea, and I just really like that idea.
Thank you. I think it's a generous thing, too, and I look forward to Mike giving a little bit of thought and getting back with us. Thank you very much.
Yeah, my concerns would be, you know, are, is, are we committed as a city to do some improvements beyond the plaque as far as park improvements? Are there any park definitions of, you know, what kind of park this would be, or what improvements might be?
Well, once it's our, once it's our park, I mean, or once it's the city's park, I mean, it would be up to the Parks Board to decide what type of amenities they'd want to put there and what type of recommendations would be made at that time. I mean, there are no stipulations as such as to what to do. It would just be some of the normal things that are seen in a park. I mean, with pocket parks, they can be as simple as, you know, the one we have with Jewel Hodges Park in town, or they can be more, you know, they can be expanded to have as much as you want on the site. It's an acre, 1.7 acres, and so it's according to the terrain, it's according to what the wishes of the Parks Board and the community and the council at that time are also. But I was just proposing and hoping tonight that we could go ahead and accept the concept with Mike looking it over, since we have plenty of time to think about it and to work out these details, and especially if we put it into the trust.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think adding a park is fine. I think having it donated is great. I think what is important, though, is that we look as a city, what is that, what can we use the property for? What would, what would the development, potential development opportunities be on that piece of property? It doesn't have immediate adjacencies to any other residents, as far as I can remember, other than, I guess, maybe Clardy's house next door.
It would be a destination park, of course.
Destination park. So, I mean, we just need to look at it and kind of think what we would want to do, but yeah, I think it's a good thing. yeah, I think it's a good thing.
Any other comments, Mike?
No, sir.
I know you wanted to make a motion and take care of this. You gonna allow Mike the time to, excuse me?
You gonna allow Mike the time to visit with the Parks Board and whoever he needs to, possibly bring us back at the next meeting, or, and ask you to come back, ask you to come back and present this item again?
As a citizen, I guess I could come back and present it. I was just hoping, as one of my last draws as a council member, to get this taken care of tonight with, you know, Mike's, doing some, you know, contingent upon Mike's discovery that he goes through in getting this together. So, that was my thought.
Well, I agree with that, but I think you need to let the city manager do his diligence, because he hadn't had time to review this item as closely as he'd like to. I think everybody's in, pretty much in favor of it, but I think we need to let the city manager, I think we need to let the city manager run its course.
I don't have a problem with that, and I would be happy to come back as Citizen Jackson to present this proposal to you at that time.
Mike, you had, sorry, did you?
That you couldn't have this back on the agenda in two weeks?
I probably would be the first council meeting in June, because that would allow me the time, because Parks Board meets the first Thursday of each month, and I would really like to include them in the loop.
Good, good.
I'll look at, since I won't have Tuesdays tied up, I'll look at my schedule and see if I, I'll be able to make that meeting.
So, do we need a motion table or just instruct you to come back and bring this back and?
I think just an instruction to bring it back for the June, first meeting in June.
Thank you.
All agree.
All right, I just wanted, bless you. I just wanted to thank you for listening to this proposal. As I said, I think it's a very generous one, and I think it's one that will enhance our parks and recreation capabilities here in the city. And it's something that would be in the future. It's not something that'll happen immediately, but as we grow, we're going to need more and more park spaces, and to have an acre, 1.7 acres donated, I think, is a big plus for us and shows not only the generosity of the family, but also the need in our community for more parkland.
Yes, thank you, Doc. Okay? D four.
D four.
Consideration discussion and possible action on the adoption of a resolution, giving permission to the Bastrop Fire Department to apply for a grant from FEMA for three full-time firefighters. Chief Adcock.
What this is, this is a resolution, I'm asking for a resolution in order for us to apply for a grant for three firefighters. The total is 76,587 per firefighter, once this grant period is up. The way it's going to work with y'all's approval is we're going to put in for three firefighters. That does not mean we have to accept all three if we are awarded.
And we may not get three.
Correct. We may not get three, we may get one, we may get two. But whenever, if we are awarded any number, we will be coming back to the council to discuss it, how many y'all feel like we need, we should accept.
And I think the key here is, by the time we will know, I'm sorry, I think the key here is, by the time we'll know where we stand and the number that we're going to get, we'll be into the budget process to more effectively address Mr. Gallo Rosa's concern. And at the end of the day, we may only be able to afford one, and if that's it, it's a start. And, and we're looking at some other opportunities or innovative ways that we may take one and come up with a different plan and fill in the other slot.
So, Willie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Willie talk first, because he raised this question at the last meeting, and we're carrying it over, so, and then I'll go to Gary and then Doc.
Let me see if I understand this correctly, Mike. We're gonna apply for three, but if they come back and say they, they'll give us three, are you gonna recommend taking all three, you gonna recommend taking one or two?
At this time, I would only feel comfortable in recommending one, and, and then, as I said, by time we'll know, with some of the new programming that Tracy has, we can do a projection out five years as what the expenditures would be, and I can give you a better insight of the financial impact that'll have on future budgets. Secondly, as, as was discussed again in our rating call this morning, one of the difficulties we have is, we really don't have an overall, because we're a growing community, and it's great, because a lot of growing communities go through this, but our ad valorem expansion goes up one month or one year, and then it kind of comes down, and then the next year kind of picks up, because everything that's picked up on the, on the ad valorem assessments is as of January 1. And so, it, it's always a catch-up until the city's growth slows down. I mean, it's a great problem, and a lot of communities would love to have what, I have looked at what has happened to us over the last five years. And that's why I've tried to level that out and then compare our revenues with our expenditures and where areas we're going to see an increased expenditure. And I think by doing that analysis and knowing how much we're going to get, I would be in a much better position to say, we can do one and maybe a part-time person that we would fund out of the general fund. What we're really trying to accomplish here is having some personnel on staff during the daytime. That's really the critical issue that we're trying to address.
Outside the fire key?
Outside the fire, yes, sir.
Do you explain why, Mike?
Well, we have a lot of volunteers, and Chief Adcock and Chief Wobus have done a great job and addressed the number-one concern that we went into the fiscal year 16 budget, and that is turning around, and we've had more volunteers apply and are now part of the Bastrop Volunteer Fire Department. Unfortunately, a lot of those people work in Austin. So, during the day, our available manpower is fairly low, where after about 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, our available manpower goes right up. And the important thing is, when you have a fire, is to get that fire truck there as quickly as possible and get it set up, and then, with a few people, hopefully, they can get the fire suppressed in a short time. But if a volunteer is out in the county and the, and there's nobody at the fire station, he's got to drive into town, pull the truck out, and get to the fire, that's a pretty long delay in our response time. So, we're trying to enhance our response time during the daytime hours.
So, Gary? I was just wondering, what's the expected date that we would know whether we've gotten the grant or not?
Supposedly, at the end of June, first part of July, we'll know.
So, we would know early in our budgeting process for 17, what, what options we have?
Yes, and we're, I've talked to Chief Adcock, and he has, has also worked up an alternate plan. I recognize that the feasibility of bringing three on at one time is probably more than we can handle, and so, we're trying to be a little innovative up our staffing level, both through this grant and maybe some other ways of beefing up personnel during the daytime hours.
Doc?
Right. As I pointed out last time, I know Mike hadn't had a chance to look it over and everything, but the fact that we would apply for it doesn't mean necessarily that we would get the funding.
Right.
But at least by applying for it, we can have that option, and then, as we are awarded or not awarded, we may get one, we may get two, we may get three, or we may not get any. But I mean, I somehow think we'll be, we'll get some of them, but as we get closer to that prospect, to that time, we'll be able to look at our budget and try to work that in into the budget workshops, the budget, well, I say we, but you will be able to work that out as you develop the budget for future years. And so, I just think it's an opportunity, as we've done in the past with police officers, when we've done the same situation.
Right.
But this is a crucial time in our development with fire and safety, and I think we need to, you know, try to see what we can do to work it out. And if we can only do one, that's fine, but I would hope that we would go ahead and adopt and apply for them, and then you all can work it out from there.
I would just say one other thing. I have used the law enforcement grant program very effectively in two other communities to get our staffing up to the Texas law enforcement standards. And the law enforcement grant's a little different in that it's a sliding scale, and here, we get a free ride for two years, and then we hit the big expenditure, where the law enforcement, it goes like down 25, then maybe 50, and then 75. So, you graduate into it, and you have a little bit more time to implement it. As I said, we, we have talked about the need for creating a volunteer fire department. We took a big step this year in creating the position of a fire chief, and we're just trying to answer the calls of a growing community.
Kay, will you reach over to the mic, and then I'll go back to Willie.
Yeah, I was just gonna move that we adopt a resolution giving permission to the Bastrop Fire Department to apply for a grant from FEMA for three full-time firefighters.
That's second.
All right, Willie?
I'm amazed that we would try to spend money without knowing everything that we need to know, because I'm against three firefighters, and I'm gonna tell you why. In three years, we're gonna have to budget, I was, I'm on board for one, and I thought that's what the, me and the manager were, or he was gonna recommend, but that's not what the motion was.
Right, and I.
But here, let me finish. We're gonna, if we're gonna talk about this, let's talk about it and get it all out in the open. This is a policy decision on the city council and, and the city manager, and we want to work with you. But we hired, we had to hire a fire chief for a specific reason, and we can get into that tonight, why we went out and hired a fire chief, because of the issue of the morale with the volunteer fire department, we needed to bring somebody on board, and it's worked, he's brought people back, there's more volunteers, so we're heading in the right direction. But the council has never sat down in any type of meeting or even, we haven't even got to a budget yet, and we're gonna go from, possibly from zero to four in four months. And, but where does it end? That's the point I'm asking. We have no plan. So, we need one, two, full-time people, including the fire chief. Do we wait a couple of years and staff another one? Do we do, you know, what is our, we're not, we don't even have a plan, but to go and say, you might put it on the possibility on the backs of future city manager and councils' expenditure of 230,000 for the three firemen. And I'm surprised, I was gonna ask our legal counsel, in prior meetings, we've always talked that you couldn't, you couldn't fund those things on future councils to commit future councils to spending, but I haven't heard that come up in the discussion from nobody, and I'm bringing it up. But I'm on board for one, and I.
Sir? Go ahead, Mike. And Mr. Gallo Rosa and I had a discussion off and on throughout the afternoon, and I think that he is absolutely correct. I don't have a problem with one, but beyond that, without doing a more intense evaluation of what it's going to mean down the road for the budget, I would not recommend more than one without discussing it with the council, and in this interim period, respond to Mr. Del Rosa, our plan for bringing on additional firefighters over the, a certain period of time, and I haven't identified what that, that period of time is.
Let me try to, let me try to ask for a clarification, because Mike, I mean, what we're hearing here is two different things. I want to see if it were clear. Or should the motion, or is the motion that you would like to see that we go for one firefighter, or that we go for three, and, but the motion includes we don't necessarily accept the three?
That's right.
Because the issue that we're dealing with, we may not get any.
That's right.
We don't know what our competition is. And so, this is going in recognizing that, in my opinion, best luck, we're probably going to get funded for two. And so, that will give us the latitude, at least getting our foot in the door, to make the decision, and it's going to be coming right at a critical time when we're developing the budget, so we can forecast that expenditure out over a period of years, and then you can look at it and say, no, the budget can't handle this, because I know on the other side of the paper, you're looking at doing a capital improvements plan. So, we're trying to balance.
Does the, does the motion include that clarification that you just described?
Okay.
I'll try to make the motion and see if this. Oh, because we've got one on the floor. Kay, you okay with whatever Mike recommends?
I am, but here's the deal, this is, we're asking for three. That's just to keep our options open. We don't have to take three. We're just asking that we, to apply for a grant for three, we can have, we can say we don't want any, once we've been given the options. Isn't that right, Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Before I call on, before I call on Doc and Willie, and then I've got you if you want to speak again, but I want to make sure that we know what the motion is on the floor, because that's what we're discussing.
Well, I think Ms. McAnally's motion was a motion to proceed for an application for three firefighters.
All right, and so, does that, does that motion include any obligation on the part of the council to do anything except, except apply for the three?
In my opinion, all you're telling us we can do is we can apply for the grant, and then, when we get the grant, we have to bring it back to you and for you to tell us how many we want us to hire.
That, with that clarification, I'll call on Doc and then Willie, and then Kay, if you want to speak again.
That's what I just wanted to clarify. The motion is basically just to apply for the grant. It's not to obligate the city to any funding or use of, it's just to apply for the grant, and then, when the decision has been made, it'll be during the time that you all can work it out in the budget process, but it's just an application. It's approving an application, and you can work that out at a later date. It's not obligating any funds now whatsoever.
Willie?
I just, you know, I don't mind going out for what you asked for as far as the three, with the understanding that we probably can only take one, but we have to, we need to apply for something, because if we get one and get it funded free for two years, I know, I know we'll have time, by three years to, the manager will have time to see how much we either grow in, in property tax base or sales tax base to have that funding, or at this level, you're gonna have to raise a tax rate a cent to pay for one firefighter, I think, so. But, you know, my concern is nothing, I told the manager, I said, I think we need at least one to complement what Mr. Wobus is doing at the fire station, but I got concerns on the general debt spending, and it seems like that's not a concern of anybody. You know, we still gotta work, we still got work to do on, on the fire station. We spent a lot of money on that fire station. We got it, we're gonna go out to ask for huge bond projects, and we don't know the dollar amount on that yet, and then we ain't even got to the killer of them all is the legal fees. And sometime, pretty quick here, we're gonna address that, whether it's, it's relatively quick or in the budget process, but that, that's the issue with me. If we didn't have an answer, or we had something in place that we could address those legal fees, I wouldn't probably be having an issue with some of the spending that we're doing, but this general fund, this general fund spending, mayor needs to, needs to get, we need to stop the bleeding somewhere.
And I think I understand from Mike's understanding that we will have an opportunity to have that conversation later.
I am preparing a proposal for the council, as you directed me previously, for the budget process, and I would like to point out to the council that when we started out last Tuesday, we only anticipated getting a ruling on one issue, and the judge ruled on seven issues, and in my opinion, that case is 95% closed. So, the major litigation that is hitting the general fund in a very short period of time is gonna, is gonna go away.
Well, I don't know, I'm gonna answer that. I appreciate that comment, but I understand the legal issues where we're at with our water issues and where, where we are with pine forest sticks, but I'm talking about outside those costs, somebody's got to prove to me why we're over budget.
I think we're.
Willie, we can do that later, I think.
Kay, I'm not interrupting you.
No, I'm gonna interrupt you. I think this is not germane to our conversation. Our conversation is a motion about applying for some, some grants, and if we get them, we come back, we have your conversation, but I don't think that's on the table.
Well, I was just answering his rebuttal.
I'm sorry, Mike, I think you shouldn't have brought it up either. How's this? Kay, did you want to talk more?
No, I just like to put my motion forward again.
Well, I think we've got it. I think Mike clarified it, and Doc, you want to speak?
I just wanted to say that, basically, we're talking about the, and I've kind of forgotten what I was gonna say, but I think it's coming back a little bit here, the tax assessments that we were talking about as far as how we're going to fund this in the future and everything. I think if the rest of the community is.
I don't think we're talking about how to fund this. I think we're talking about, are we gonna apply for a grant or not? Let's stay on that subject, okay? That's the motion, and that's, what you're saying is out of order. So, we want to talk about money, we'll talk about money later on, but we're not, we're not talking about the motion that we have before us.
It may be out of order, but it was in line with what was being.
It may be out of order, but it was in line with what was being discussed.
I admit that I let it go on way too long and I asked, Willie, just talk, talk about it, I made a comment to...
I apologize to the manager.
You don't have to apologize to anybody, I, it's my fault, I shouldn't have stopped you in the first place.
Well, I'll call for the question, how's that?
We can avoid that if y'all are ready to vote.
Ready to vote.
I think everybody's ready to vote. What we're voting on is Kay's motion, Mike, let me let you clarify one more time just for sure.
My understanding is that you're authorizing us to apply for three grants, I mean, for three firemen under this grant program. And once we receive notification of what we will get, I'm to bring that back to the council and advise you how many we were allocated and then we will be discussing how we will fund those and how many we wish to choose because again, we may get zero, we may get one, we may get two, we may get three. It's a very competitive program and this is our first time to apply for it, so there's a strong likelihood we're probably not even going to get any, I'll be surprised.
And Kay, that's your understanding of the motion and Doc, that's your understanding of the motion. Are you the second or, Gary's the second or? Gary, is that your understanding of the motion?
That's my understanding.
And will you please call the roll?
Councilmember McAnally? Yes. Councilmember Schiff? Yes. Councilmember Jackson? Yes. Mayor Protim Del Rosas? Yes.
Thank you all and we will live to discuss this another day.
Thank you, Mayor.
We will move into an executive session. Bastrop City Council will meet in a closed executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, to discuss the following. Now we need one, Mike, what else?
Two and three.
All right, Section 551, 071, 1A, B, and Section 551, 071, 2, consultation with attorney concerning potential pending threatened and/or contemplated litigation claims and/or settlement mediation including but not limited to following municipal water supply pending and/or potential code enforcement litigation related to subdivision development and/or to a matter upon which the attorney has a duty and/or responsibility pursuant to the Texas District rules and professional conduct of State Bar of Texas to report to the governing body, governmental body concerning these matters and/or any other matter posted on the agenda, 2, Section 551 dot 072, deliberation regarding real property, regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, disposition, negotiations, or value of real property, section, number three, Section 551, 087, to discuss a value way to deliberate regarding commercial, financial, business, and/or other information that the city has received related to the economic development opportunities or prospects in or near the territory of the city and/or to deliberate the potential offer of economic incentive to the business prospect as noted herein. We're in executive session.